I think, I think.
Hello.
Hello, Eva.
I think we can call this meeting to order. Like to remind everyone that we are being recorded. And it is 5:01. Called the joint meeting of the Concord School Committee, Carlisle, Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee. Think we need a roll call. Attendants?
And in that regard, so we have Concord Carlisle and Concord called to order. I understand, Sarah, that in Carlisle you have expedited by simply having members go alphabetically without, without being queued up. If we're all pretty nimble, that might over time be a smart thing.
Yeah, we're, we're losing our, our engine today because Anderson is not. So Court, I think you're gonna have to kick it off.
I'll see what I can do. Okay, so Booth present.
That would be to me next. Heather Baut, present.
Miss Dadd, am I next?
You are?
I think so.
Eva?
Mostafi, aye.
Rainey, aye.
Wilson, aye for region.
And for the audio record, this is September 29, 2020.
And we'll get better at that alphabetical thing, but I like that. That'll give, keep us more efficient when we're voting.
So I think we'd like to entertain a motion to move to executive session until 5:30. Just so you know, you don't have a separate link. We're gonna put you in a break, Jared's gonna put you in the breakout room. So you'll, you'll get a cue when that's, when that happens after you vote.
So don't hang up and leave the meeting, basically.
Don't do anything. Say put it, it'll prompt you.
Why don't I make a motion? I'll move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees enter into executive, executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and return to open session.
Now with that, be, we need a second, I'm sorry, then we can converse. I second that. We, we mentioned 5:30. Now, I think that would require us to not get underway until 5:30.
Right.
So are we comfortable with that?
That's what we've put on the agenda, so I don't think we can make it any earlier at this point.
Okay, good. It's in print there. Excellent. Thank you.
So did you move for both, both of you?
Thank you for that protocol. Cynthia, yes, for both.
Okay, roll call, vote, discussion?
I think Fatima went to the breakout room already, and that's my fault.
Oops.
How do I?
Let's just assume that's okay with her and go meet her there.
Right. We'll take that as an affirmative vote.
We have enough, we have enough votes to, to move it, right?
Yes.
Booth, aye for both?
Baut, aye for both.
Mostafi, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
Wilson, aye for region. See you all.
All right.
Breakout room. Okay, now.
And the Concord Carlisle School Committee is reopening. Do you want to work the agenda, Sarah?
Sure. Start with, with, where are we? Public comment first. Do we have any public comments?
Ideally for this, you'd look to your Zoom screen.
Any raised hands?
Might want to just mention briefly, in case there's anyone on who's new, that to comment, you raise your hand in Zoom. Yeah, we don't have that many people today.
No. Yep, you can go to the participant list and click raise hand if you're not familiar with Zoom. I think, I think we're good. We can move on to minutes. So we'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the joint meetings of August 3rd, August 11th, August 18th, August 21st, and August 25th, all of 2020.
So moved for both committees.
Is there a second?
For both?
Roll call, vote?
I just have one quick comment on one of them.
Yep.
811, Aaron. Section 5. It, it refers to polices instead of policies.
Okay.
That's just a little tiny thing, but. Show you how to do some work.
Yeah. Good catch. And with comments to Aaron, amazing catching up on all of our meetings. Oh, my gosh, hours and hours.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So go ahead, Sarah, I'm sorry.
Any more discussion? It's not, no. Okay, roll call, vote?
Booth, aye for both?
Baut, aye for both.
And let's see.
Fatima?
I think Fatima might be still in the breakout room.
No, she's here.
I, Miss Dadd for both.
Okay.
Mostafi for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
Wilson for region. Okay, and we'll move on to the minutes from the executive sessions. Also of August 3rd, August 11th, August 18th, August 21st, August 25th, and also September 3rd, all of 2020.
I'll move for both committees that we accept all those executive session minutes you mentioned.
Second for both committees.
Roll call, vote?
Booth for both?
Discussion, discussion is learning. Yep. No?
Baut, aye for both.
Miss Dadd, aye for both?
Mostafi for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
Wilson for region. And with that, I think we can move on to chairs and liaisons reports. Yeah, any, any news from, from other committees, from other groups?
I think the only one I have under chairs would be that Sarah and I attended the Concord Chairs Breakfast a week ago. We heard from all the chairs, but notably from the, the town moderator for Concord who discussed next year's town meeting. But Lori, I think you're gonna be covering some of those details. So I think we'll let those details go for now. Okay.
Good.
And I'll throw it, this is also something Lori may mention. The League, maybe you're mentioning this, but the League, since I tend to communicate with them, is, has invited Lori to their first Friday, this Friday morning. So sure she'll tell us more about that. She'll be presenting. And I will, and maybe we should mention, actually, they asked us to mention it. So why don't I, we just do it now. If people are interested, this is the first Friday event that they often do. It's gonna be all about going back to school, reopening schools. And to register for this Zoom event, you go to the League's website, which is l w v c c dot org. At 9:30 Friday morning. So that should be a great, great presentation.
And if you have trouble, it's an easy search under Legal Women Voters, Concord Carlisle.
Yes, exactly. And I will also mention, although it's not an official liaison role, that The Mighty Moose is now happening live. In fact, I don't usually just wear a T-shirt for our meetings, but I dressed up for the event today. As you all know, it's usually in person. It would have been in person this past Sunday. And so instead, it's a two-week virtual event. We have a lot of people registered, even though it's virtual. The fundraising goal for this year was an increase over last year, even though we're going virtual. The goal was $200,000, and we are now up to $210,000 already. Yeah, it's really, really incredible what this community does coming together. And it, and we have people from all over, you know, on the note of silver linings of pandemic and virtual worlds, there are people participating and donating from all across the country now. Because, you know, people forward the links, and we have people in California and Alaska and, and all over the country either participating and/or donating. So it's still an incredible event, even though it's kind of a two-week-long event now. And if you're not involved yet, go to MightyMoose5k.org and get involved. It's a really incredible process. And Kicks for Cancer is doing really well also, which is also virtual. If you drive around town, you'll see lots of pink and teal signs, yard signs. They did an amazing job selling those to raise money. And all of that fundraising money is going to the same ovarian cancer research team that Mighty Moose is raising funds for. So it's really, really powerful stuff going on there.
Point. And they will accept our money without a long sign.
Yes, absolutely. There we go, yay. I got the Kicks for Cancer out, very good. You should wear that, Fatima. We'll have one for, for each organization represented tonight.
Other items under liaise?
Yes.
We heard from the town manager that perhaps the Transportation Committee is well-served with John Arena as a staff member, but that doesn't preclude us observing. And there have been communications with the FinCom in regard to the, the once-budget subcommittee. And we have explained to the FinCom that as a school committee, we are sharing the, the ongoing responsibility of understanding current revenue expenditures with Jared's support and leadership on that side, as well as Lori's. And that we have mechanisms in place as a committee, without a subcommittee, to be active in the budget development process. So we've confirmed with them that there's no intention of having a budget subcommittee because of the way we believe we can share the responsibility as, as a group of seven across the two committees. And I think that's all I have under liaise activities.
Eva?
Yes, I have a liaison update. This Thursday, CPAC had their board meeting. The new, the new members, membership boards were voted in. Carol Yale stepped down from her long-term position as a president, and we're grateful. Everyone was really grateful for all the work and all the time that she has put into the advisory group, as it is a volunteer group, supporting families with students on IEPs with special educational needs. This CPAC is definitely a, a very engaged group that stays up to date on anything school-related and school committee meetings. So they're looking forward to expanding their base this year of members. And they were looking for support in that area. So to connect with more families. And also, they were very grateful to meet with the two liaisons from school committee this year, Alexa and myself. So we got an opportunity to meet with everyone, listen to their concerns and things that they would like on the school committee to pay attention this year. When it comes to the needs of the students, they are most vulnerable. And let me see if there's anything else that I have missed. I think that, yes, and they gave us a little bit of input of what they would like to see for goals for special education this year to be looked at this year by the school committee. And as a committee, committee, as an advisory group, COVID-19 is still in, in the discussion, how everyone is adjusting and adapting and communicating with, and how the, the communications flow, flow from families is coming to CPAC, what they're hearing from families. So few highlights there as well around things that are happening in special education, what they are hearing, that we were, we had an opportunity to listen to. And that's it. Thank you.
Eva, I'd like to take a moment and echo what you said in regard to recognizing Carol Yale for, for her leadership in the, the, what I would really call the, the, what, the, the resurgence of a CPAC that is a very effective voice. And she's done a lot of work. Thank you for recognizing her.
Thank you. It's, we, as with any volunteer positions, parents that have, that have special education students, you know, that their time is stretched. So we are really grateful for all of these families that step up and help and advise the school committee. And she, she was a tremendous force, getting workshops and educational pieces to, to families and connecting them, where to find help and how to navigate the school system. So very grateful.
So Cynthia, I just wanted to update the capital planning task force. Met again after a long hiatus. And we are now trying to prepare for at least one or maybe two public hearings about capital planning in Concord. The other report is, and I guess I'll ask Lori, she was invited to the table at the Finance Committee meeting last week. And I had to leave sort of in the midst of that. And I happen to have a chance to go back and watch any, the full meeting. So I'll just ask Dr. Hunter to include anything of relevance in her report that we should hear about from the Finance Committee meeting. I do know that they're very interested in doing some kind of training or workshop with the school committees regarding
Yes.
budgeting and finances. So that's it.
So just, I think I'll probably do that with Jared when we get to the budget agenda item, because it'll all, it's actually the context for what we're bringing you tonight.
Perfect, okay. Any other liaison reports? Sarah, should we move to correspondence?
I think so. And I think that you've covered our correspondence.
We've, we've had two, two others that haven't been mentioned yet during the last week. One was a citizen request that we keep the dashboards, the COVID dashboard as visible as it has been. And we look with care as to the dates that we're posting for those dashboards. And secondly, correspondence about the cohort days and how holidays and professional days impact those cohort days on our calendar. And we have not replied to that one yet, but that will be one that's handled at the leadership level by Dr. Hunter and her team. And I think that was the extent of it, Sarah.
I think so. I think so. And so move on to reports, the reopening updates. Great, thank you. So I did give you a more customary report this week and trying to get our routines back. So I'll just offer highlights of the written document. And then there's a couple of things that I'll add on that came up after I gave this to you. So just, it's important we follow through and give you the conclusion to the one positive COVID case at the middle school. All of the close contacts tested negative. And actually, at the, at the hour we're meeting, they're all out of quarantine and able to return to school. So we've been very successful in navigating and isolating that situation, which is exactly what we thought would be the case when we made decisions back 10 days ago. So we're glad for that. And I think it's been a pretty good, good opportunity to practice our protocols and see if there were tweaks. Really, I would say, in terms of tweaks, nothing major needed changing. What we did do was fill in itemized details of the checklist as we made our way through it, primarily filling in communication, which, as you know, we extensively communicated all through those few days. And I think that was really critical, and we would want to continue that, so. Flu clinics, we do have staff flu clinics set up at the schools. As you know, flu immunizations are highly recommended, if not mandated. The students need a mandated flu shot by January 1st. We are in conversation about family, family flu clinics. Obviously, setting that up for all families would be impossible. So it would just be an effort to offer a one-time convenience for those who can attend. Most families need to be working with their primary care pediatricians and any other flu clinics that are available. We will be messaging this more as we get to the 1st of October, which is this week. So early next week. And just reminding people that that's something that needs to be on their to-do list. The board of, the health officials are recommending that it be sometime in the next couple of weeks that then you're primed for flu season, which tends to be those November through winter months, so. COVID testing, I'm just giving you an update on a conversation I had with one of the vendors. It's a vendor we've already spoken to, and they're just giving me updates on things they're working on. There's nothing definitive to talk on here yet. It's a projection of what they may have coming. They are working on a six-person saliva pool test with a cost of $10 per test. That is dramatically different pricing than we've seen in the past and could indeed be something we could consider. Even at a weekly level, we've run some numbers, and it's getting closer to the discussion point of something the district could work with. So I'll keep you posted. I've asked them to stay in touch as that continues to evolve. It's good to hear there's still movement on different options that might give us more widespread opportunity.
So the operative word there is they, they still may have this available. It's not definitive.
Yes, correct.
And backing up a little bit for anybody who listens to this tape, we understand that no reputable medical expert is suggesting any reason not to get a flu shot. There's some discussion about vaccines being developed in the future. And there's no, no evidence or likelihood, even remotely, that that would suggest that a flu shot now is ill-advised. That flu shot is advised is, I think universally.
Mandated, yes.
Universally held at this point.
Yeah, the state mandate for the kids. We'll, we'll be sure we're messaging that. And we will be tracking it. That's gonna be a district responsibility. Concord Education Fund, they reached out to me and invited me to their first board meeting. And they've got a really energetic board. There's been new membership to the board. So there's a lot of positive energy to kick off a year, even in such unusual times. Clearly, their events are gonna be dramatically impacted by the COVID restrictions, but they're still determined to move forward. We talked high level of reopening and some of how the year's gonna play out potentially. I revisited with them some of the great discussions we had last year about not only supporting the grants that they fund for the teachers in the spring, which they still did execute. We owe you that list because it happened while we were closed. But also in terms of bigger picture projects, that's of great interest to them and certainly could really further some of our strategic planning ideas, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Just updates, I've met with both union leadership over the last week. I thought it important to bring you feedback directly from them. Overall, the opening's going, going well, if not very well. Teachers are working really hard. I think we just need to stress that. They have re, they're caught, the word I've heard a couple of times, the phrase is, you know, we all feel like first-year teachers. And that just means you're always, the amount of preparation to be ready for kids is exponentially different than, once you've done it before and you're familiar with how you're operating. But we're really excited about what's happening right now. That doesn't mean it's perfect. We don't expect perfection. What we're seeing is a lot of really great energy and effort and some, some real success even early on. So it's, we're off to a positive start. I'll leave it at that. Certainly, we'll have more discussion and work through feedback, which is my next piece here. It's clear, and I'm reporting anecdotally, we are gonna talk with you about a survey and figuring out the process and timing and questions we want to ask. But just the anecdotal feedback, which really is a really constant flow, to my email, to the principals' emails, and even just anecdotally, as I'm in meetings or, you know, in other settings, the, the positive feedback has been enormous and overwhelming. And that's just been very well received. It's messaging I've passed on to the district, if it's coming just to me, and make sure that it's going to all those who created what's happening right now and continue to sustain it. So just really important, I think we name that. I've had people without kids in schools email me or stop me at, say, town meeting. I just think the community is aware of what it took to get us here and are just really grateful that we're able to provide what we are for kids. Cultural competency and anti-racism. I highlighted some of what's happening in the schools through the clubs and groups, both student and teacher groups, and at least one faculty-parent combined group. And the District Cultural Competency Committee actually meets again tomorrow. So that work is ongoing. We will bring you a more formal update as we get into the coming months. I think we had talked about November, probably, to bring Andrew and Kristin back. Professional development, we have not stopped learning, and our desire to learn continues. Kristin's worked with her team and created a, you can see, extensive list of options for teachers. We are recreating these Wednesdays, these, last year they were Tuesday. This year, they're Wednesday afternoons, where K-12, really pre-K to 22, is gonna get together and self-select their paths. And those will happen consistently over the three afternoons of October, December, and February. And we're really excited, if you look through the list here, there's a lot of topics that we've been spending a lot of time on. There's some really names that are highlights in the field. Jessica Minahan, Tracy Benson, we're excited for that. And some other opportunities here that maybe we hadn't offered in the past. It's a nice combination of social, emotional, technology, cultural competency, unconscious bias, meeting the needs of all kids. I'll let you read through it, but we're pretty excited about what's here, and the staff's responding really positively as they're in the signup process. On one of my last.
Lori, if you might. Couple of things. One, I wonder if you and Jared could speak to professional development within the context of budget changes for PD, for fiscal '21. And then secondly, completely independent of that, I, I simply want to note that much of this is student-directed, as it should be. And we have a point in time when teachers and educators generally in our district, as well as all kinds of support staff, are, are likely gonna feel the effects of the relentless nature of the work they're doing right now. They're not just feeling new. Even, even the veterans who are capable in a virtual platform and a physical platform are, are physically working harder, cognitively certainly. But, and so I simply want to note that I, as one school committee member and as a citizen, would hope that we are trying to, trying to, trying to support the resilience of, of our teachers. And that includes not just strengthening their, their delivery as educators, but also some, some, some care efforts, if you will.
Most definitely. And I think. And I think the first thing that comes to my mind was when you see the calendar recommendations. Because we didn't use all 10 days back as school opened, we've got the ability to put a professional day in really every month till the first of the year, and then even beyond, we'll have more flexibility. I think, I think that time's really critical, Court. We're also really trying to support them in not only time for preparation, but time together so that they're supporting one another, not all reinventing the wheel. And then, of course, self-care, really trying to find ways we all pull back and get our, get our ability to catch our breath, the leadership included, if not the priority right now, because they've been going full steam all summer as well. And, and we're just, we're talking a lot about it and definitely spending time. I, I guess I'd say it this way, and I, I think I'm trying to model this. We're appreciating a lot of things that we took for granted, and I think that actually is good for all of us. And noting that and naming that and just the privilege of being with kids is how teachers are saying it to me. So I, I think there, there needs to be a balance. Things are not what they were before, and we don't want everybody just on a treadmill to keep up with these models we created and all of that. It's really gotta, gotta be both sustainable and rewarding. And so far, we're there, but it needs a lot of careful monitoring because we're in the marathon part of this. And so I agree with everything you said, Court, and I, I definitely am assured that we're going to continue to nurture and support everyone involved because it is going to be a year like no other.
Yeah. I'll just echo that, and I'll say, I feel like since I'm in a school building as well, that people started out with a sprint.
Yeah.
And I think that they're trying to figure out they can't, they can't sustain it.
Right.
We have to figure out a way to, not call it a marathon, but call it trying to find, I feel like a lot of teachers are battling technology, and it's just, it's really difficult. And I think we need to help them figure out ways to maximize. I know we have remote students, and we have to address their learning needs, obviously. But the students who are at the schools, we need to maximize their classroom time and figure out a way to do that without, you know, damaging the experience for our remote students. And it's, it's, it's really, I, I think it's harder than we all thought it would be personally. But, and I know you're going to continue to work with both the building leadership and the teachers, but I, I just want to let the teachers and the building leadership know, we appreciate all their hard work and, but, you know, please try to balance your calories because I just don't think it can sustain the, the pace that, that we have had over the last month.
Yeah, I agree with everything you, you've all said. Absolutely. My last topics are, well, one is the League of Women Voters. In a quick turnaround this weekend, I was invited to speak at the First Friday, which I'm happy to do. We've got a really positive rapport with the League, and I, I know how much they're going to want to hear all of what's happening and how we got here and just always really vested and come in with a really informed piece and background and many educators in the room usually. So I'm looking forward to that and updating them on where we are and how we got here. And then my last piece is really reflective of maybe some of what you just said in a different way. We were noticed last week that we have been selected to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which is the NAEP test done, conducted by the federal government. Districts are select schools, the middle school's been selected. Individual schools are selected from among the country, all across the country. And the mandate is to participate, it's contingent and connected to your Title I funding and the ESSA Act. The results are used at an aggregate level to compare states, to compare countries. It's, and I'm just going to say this in a way, I probably don't say it very often, but I'm finding the whole thing just incredulous that we would even be considering this kind of testing in this environment. The memos come with a COVID, we gave you a two-week extension in January till March. It's an in-person test. There's, even though it's a, it's a technical test on the computer, they send oversight to administer the test, all these promises of we'll comply with whatever you need to let the supervisors in the building. We're not even letting parents in the building. Like, the whole thing doesn't make any sense to me, and we're fighting for every minute of instructional time. And so I just will, I'm letting you know that I'm doing what MAS often asks of us as superintendents, which is to advocate with our legislators. In this case, I, it's really a federal piece. The state can't make any decisions or options until the federal government considers it. This does connect with MCAS because it's all part of the same legislation. And again, Massachusetts will have no options for considering MCAS deliveries without some federal relief attached to it. We, in fact, got late this afternoon, the MCAS notice that says, subject to change, but right now we're planning on in-person testing, kind of as normal. I guess I'm struggling with standardized testing in an environment where nothing is standard and there are no norms, goes against everything I've ever studied or learned. We're going to know, we're going to learn what we already know, which is that equity is a huge problem right now. High-needs kids are, are suffering the most because remote is so hard for them. And to some extent, we're going to be assessing parent involvement, and that just, none of those things make sense to me. So I'm just naming to you my level of concern and my plan for some letter writing, which I've already drafted. And I just feel really strongly that this just is unfathomable, that this should be in any way a priority. And I guess I'll end by saying, you know, I've been on with, on webinars with colleagues from across the globe. We're all, we're going to compare ourselves to who and what when all of us are asking the same exact questions. You're not assessing anything other than, you know, how, how good of a day are you having in the pandemic with instructional delivery and giving up the instructional time instead? So pretty concerning. I'll leave it at that for now, but.
It seems like.
Frustrating.
An extreme exercise in pseudo-normality.
Kind of put the blinders on and just go is, yeah, is right.
So Laurie, I'll, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just had a quick question about MCAS. Does the state have, give, has given any indication whether they are expecting coverage of the same curriculum as two years ago? Or are they going to have different standards or different expectation considering the cuts that have had to be done to the syllabus and curriculum and classroom?
Right. The message we're hearing from the state this year, which is different than last spring. Last spring, they identified priority standards that they thought were, and we didn't disagree with them, you know, prerequisites to be able to continue on. This year, the message is all of the standards you are responsible for. Yeah, that's the message so far this year. Not that we're not aiming for that. It's just that everything takes a different pace and timing than in the past, and we're backtracking to some work from last spring. And from our take, the kids are in a better place than we thought where we'd be probably at the end of September. But to say we're going to be on track to cover every standard and every content area is really not quite realistic, so.
And frankly, to spend that kind of instructional time.
Yeah.
When we're desperate to claw back every minute, honestly, that we can have, it was already a problem in, in normal times.
Yeah.
But to spend the amount of time, it's not just an hour on MCAS. So I know MAS C has a draft resolution, if not, I think it's in draft format, strongly against this. So, and I'm sure MAS S will have the same. So I, I think each school committee will have the opportunity to adopt such a resolution, supporting your concern, so.
I know MAS S has brought up, not the NAEP per se, because that's just a lucky, the lucky of us who get selected, but the whole assessment process of the commissioner. I think, you know, there's, there's a lot to happen in Washington in the next week's year. I think there's a little bit of wait that out. I got more anxious than I had been because the NAEP is coming up in January, and that makes the, makes whatever happens next month completely irrelevant. So some advocacy is probably where we're all going to want to be, and I'm glad to hear you're supportive of that.
Definitely. In fact, my question would be, well, first, Laurie, thank you for taking on advocacy yourself. Is there also value to us doing some of that? Not necessarily waiting for an MAS C resolution, but to, you know, if, if all of us are in agreement, to appoint a couple of people to reach out to our senators and representatives at the federal level? Do you think that would be valuable?
Maybe in combination with me, partly because I have connections with some of their aides already as they've either solicited support. I mean, sometimes it's been building usage, and they're, when they're local, they're asked for stuff. And I've had others, I've had others reach out and support me during crisis as recently as last winter. So maybe in combination, we could approach some of them and see, see if we can be sure that the, you know, the radar is there to hear, hear the concerns.
I can't imagine.
At least that's important that we would do that. I think the only question is kind of who signs it, so to speak. I mean, I'm happy to put some time into this, but I think there's more value if we either all agree that, you know, what you work on with someone is signed by the committees or if it's signed by the chairs.
Committee. I feel strongly.
I feel strongly.
It should have the full.
Does anybody, would anybody be uncomfortable with us signing advocacy on behalf of the committees?
Well, let's, let's back up.
We should review it.
Of course, of course, yes.
Let's ask a preliminary question and hear from our colleagues. Would you be comfortable with the chairs as your representatives continuing to communicate with Laurie about this in the interests of something that comes to the entire committee? Meaning, are you comfortable with the advocacy role around testing mandates for this school year specifically?
I am in full agreement to advocate.
So the idea is we would simply be your ambassadors, so to speak, working with Laurie, but nothing would go out over our name. Rather, we'd bring something back to this group, and it would, there would be some coordination with what's happening at the, at the superintendent's level.
Perfect.
Yep.
So I'm hearing consensus on that. Sarah, we've got that on our list.
Great. Thank you guys for taking that on.
It's, yeah, I mean, it, it's bad, it's, it's difficult for our district, but it is really devastating for so many other districts.
And that's part of my concern too, Sarah. I feel like districts like us should be advocating because we get this enormous privilege of test scores aren't our worry, like, all of that just isn't priority need for us. And that, in that way, we don't come off as, I think sometimes it's hard, having been in a district with less means and test scores on the edge and things. You come off as defensive sometimes in those environments, and that, I think somehow unbelievably negates the concern. And I just feel like part of our role, because of our privileges, to name the concern and open the dialogue differently. So I'm, I'm hopeful. Thank you for your support.
Laurie, before you move on and just come back to professional development for a minute, we know we had some savings last year. Jared, your level of comfort with professional development budget this year, if we do have not only all of these teaching and learning needs, but also the preventive health needs that we discussed earlier, are you and Laurie comfortable? Or are we tight already?
I think I'll let her answer it. From a budgetary standpoint, we didn't budget much PD, but we are teaching, teachers are teaching teachers. But Laurie, do you want to?
I'm putting you on the spot too, Laurie. If you want to wait a week, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I can give you a high level because I think we've got different pockets of money that are different. So Jared's right, we did reduce some of the professional development knowing workshops, and teachers' opportunities would be different this year, that they can't go travel to conferences and some of those types of things. What we did maintain in a strong way was Kristen Herbert's budget that she oversees, and that's where much of what you see on the list for those half-days is coming from. And I know there's availability there to continue to plan, to support teachers and to provide opportunities for learning. What we minimized a bit was the individual request pool of money because there just isn't as much opportunity. The, the pieces coming out of Kristen's office are still, still intact.
Thank you. So Sarah, if, if we're going to turn to old business, I'm going to ask, well, actually, I'll move it myself. I'd move that we change the order of Item 7 such that practices and protocols precede strategic plan and manual. And I don't, I don't see school committee goals per se within the, the, yeah, I do, forgive me, that's, so where I'm going with this is I think it'd be wise to discuss how we want to function, practices and protocols first, then look at strategic plan as an overview of what we're here to do as a district. Thirdly, look at school committee goals. And then fourth, look at the, the newly created manual. Does that order make sense to folks? So again, I move that we change Item 7 such that its practices and protocols, A, strategic plan, B, school committee goals, C, manual, D, so to speak, in that order.
Seconded for both committees.
Roll call vote.
Discussion, we okay with that?
Yep.
Booth eye for both?
Bow and eye for both.
Eye for both.
Mustafi eye for Regent.
Rainey eye for both.
Wilson for Regent.
So that said, Sarah, if we start with practices and protocols, we have the, the links in our agenda, and these are almost mirror images. Would we be correct in saying that? Concord and Concord-Carlyle?
Yes, just about, having been a part of them for a while. There are a couple of wording differences, but for the most part, they're the same. We could probably open up the Concord-Carlyle one just for consistency, and I'll be looking at the same one.
Excellent, okay.
So the purpose of our conversation is to go through them one by one, to have people comment if they see something that they would change or updated. How, how should we proceed?
Well, we, I guess to that point, we want to take whatever time is necessary because we are setting the, the, the conditions for this committee for an effective year. You know, we've got a big, important year. We want to be a, a group that's as functional as those of previous years and previous committees in an unusually demanding time. So the way I understand this discussion of practices and protocols is we're making our, our understanding about how we function together, not implicit, but rather very explicit, very, very visible, so that we can hold ourselves to these agreements. So to that end, my answer is let's quickly go through them and, and have people pause on any one they want, Cynthia.
Sounds good.
I'm looking at Concord-Carlyle practices, or perhaps the superintendent would do a screen share, is that a better bet?
Sure, I can, sure.
Thank you, Laurie.
Just one sec.
Take turns leading. Take turns leading the group through this. We would put a new date on it and note that this is a commitment. I'm looking at a previous one that reads, "Do hereby publicly commit ourselves, collectively and individually." This one doesn't have quite that level of declaration, but it is, in fact, the same thing. We're declaring that this is what we want to do. Here at Practices Now, we know that item one is accurate, and we work off the web because it's the most current with the most accurate links. Number two, am I correct, we would need a couple of online or remote meeting notes here as well?
Yeah, probably makes sense to note how people make comments on Zoom.
So for example.
The other thing to point out here, only because there's been discussion of it in the past years, is when public comments happen, we've moved them around a little bit to try to be most, I guess, audience friendly, but also efficient. For several years, we've agreed at the start makes sense, but at the chair's discretion, sometimes we welcome public comments on other topics, you know, if they're high interest and high debate. And we debated for a few years on and off how to work that and if we should do comments later. And that's where we've ended up. And for the past few years, it's worked pretty well, but just thought I'd highlight that.
Thank you. So we might add something along the lines of here, "Online meetings require members of the public to state their name and address and be recognized," quote unquote. I think that might suffice. Three is consent.
We haven't typically used this much, but we certainly could if we have a lot of votes on that seem consent worthy.
Four is the necessary courtesy and efficiency for our Carlisle colleagues that we strive to achieve with limited results.
I think we, we've gotten better at splitting, you know, doing Concord business at the end of the meeting so that when there are those items, which will happen again as the building project comes back online and the budgets come forward, and making sure we just recognize that we don't want Carlisle members to sit through things that don't pertain to them. We are aware, I agree, we don't always get it perfect, but that strategy seems to have been among the most effective.
So we'll continue to strive for that. Number five, advisory committees. We certainly have examples of those. Six, the need to open up communication even further for high interest items. Seven, observers and members. We'll see that later tonight in the agenda. Chairs reply with CC to all colleagues on the committee. Chairs liaison to PTG Parents Association Presidents, monthly meetings. We have those new dates. Thank you, Lori. Chairs may meet informally with select board and FinCom chairs and increase collaboration. That's not to suggest there aren't other members in the room, as there frequently are. And the chair's breakfast for Concord, that's a Wednesday morning, once a month, continues to this day. And we will each year do what we're doing right now, in addition to some self-evaluation. Comments, concerns? So I put wording around one small change to that second one. So now we're on to this second document, the public commitment. And this is around the protocols. Sarah, do you want me to keep going here?
You can keep going. Yep.
This reminder that we might have specific interests and abilities when we're in the room together. We serve all. That's our pledge. The tone matters. Number two, that we do our homework and show it when we arrive. Number four, that we understand the role of the school committee includes understanding the role and authority of the superintendent who manages all day-to-day operations. And a little more on that in number five. We communicate with the district representatives through our representative, the superintendent. Number six, the no surprises rule. If we think we know something that will benefit others, we have an obligation to communicate, and they do with us to the extent possible. We don't speak for the school committee unless the school committee has spoken. So we don't have any authority independent of the committee. And we have to be careful how we, we frame our participation and present ourselves when we're in public settings. Number seven. Lori, can you scroll down a bit?
Yes.
Eight is open meeting law, something that we all have to stay sharp on. Critical law, an important law, a necessary law, and one that in a public arena, how do I say this, invites us to stumble and make mistakes. So we have to be careful not to. That we don't have the capacity to deliberate in any other forum other than public except as provided for by executive session regulations that are quite strict. Number nine, this is a consensus agreement. We may disagree when we come to decisions. We agree to agree on supporting those decisions. Number 10, that for purposes of accountability on messaging, the chairs have that role, the given chairs for a given year. The public nature of our work, number 11.
There's just a little typo there with the, they're meetings that are business meetings, it should be, that are held in public, instead of meetings are business meeting.
Well, I think the meaning there, Sarah, was the school committee meetings are business meetings, meaning we're here to do public business. I think that was the original author's intent.
Yeah, of course, it's just missing an S.
It's just missing an S.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, I understand that we are, we are meeting in public, but we are not a public meet, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed the, I missed the missing S.
That's all.
Thank you. And then finally, we do this reexamination each year in order to reaffirm in a, in a public way, individually and collectively. With that, accepting the date on the top and the bottom and the correction that Sarah pointed out, are these protocols and practices that we indeed can follow faithfully? Used to, what, police ourselves so we're effective in our role on behalf of the larger community? And then another independent question, Heather, in terms of the parallel documents for the Concord district, anything to point out, or are we running side by side?
Oh, let me see. I'll have to look quickly and scan for differences again. I don't think so. I mean, the primary difference was where you pointed out, you know, for the joint one, that we'll try to do Concord business separately. If I look quickly, I don't, I don't think we have anything on Concord that's distinct to Concord. I would just say overall, to answer your question, can we follow these? I would, I would vote yes. I think these all make sense, and we can and should follow them. I also think, given that we are now meeting primarily by Zoom and don't know for how long we will, I know in Concord, that's still a town mandate, I think we should be thinking about, are there other protocols that we need to implement for, for virtual meetings like this?
So to that end, I looked at friends at Zoom and paraphrased a few ideas. I don't know how much should fall into this document, Heather, but things that came up for me. One, there should be a known meeting manager and administrator. Two, that we record, it's already a known. Three, we continue to use passwords. These are all just practices already in place, thankfully, thanks to our leadership inside the district. Here's one. I don't know if we discussed, and that is, some school committees have only signed-in users join as participants. They've identified themselves with a validated email, for example. Other things that are new to us, attendance and voting by roll call, the way we're doing now. And minor items like mute upon entry, our assurances that we'll try to avoid background noises, the hand raised for citizen participation when we are remote. We already mentioned the name and address requirement. And somewhere in one of the documents, although I didn't see it tonight, tell me if you saw it, was the, the statement, I don't know where this came from, but I believe it's true. The school committee generally does not engage in back-and-forth dialogue with citizen presenters and uses comments to inform the school committee.
I think that's what's alluded to in the business meetings, like we, you know, it is our meeting that is in public, but it is not a meeting open, it's, it's not a meeting with the public.
Right.
Or in front of the public, but not with the public.
And, and that might be in our policy handbook.
Maybe that's where it was. So I don't feel a need to put some of these in our protocols or practices, but I thought it'd be worthy of at least mentioning tonight. Do any of them rise to the level of?
Let me throw that out here. Do we expect all school committee members, when they're attending, to be on camera, well-lit room, those kinds of things?
I would, I would venture to say that is our responsibility.
But we're not, if, if pre-COVID, we were not, if you were telephonically attending, you could attend by call-in, right?
I guess you have to identify yourself as been participating remotely in a Zoom meeting.
It could only happen if there was approval prior and there was a quorum.
Right. And this would indicate that there was some barrier to your being on camera and present in the meeting. You know what I'm saying? Right, Sarah?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm probably, Eva and I are a little more sensitive to this because we, through the whole summer, had at least two public school meetings every week, right? So we had about hours on camera. And, and sometimes that's also in these kinds of times, it's not always possible to be physically, you know, it's one thing when we have our regular meeting schedule, right? And you say, I dedicated this time. But when you go for five months, sort of, with meetings at least twice a week, you know, that where you're trying to juggle some other, it's not always possible.
Right, but just to, right, but just as that citizens' expectation, they don't often know that's all going on, especially if you're from Concord, you don't know that you're meeting in Carlisle this, you know, every, so it's like you have two meetings a week. So I just think we need to have citizens understand why people would not be on camera, because they perhaps have the wrong perception that the person's not on camera. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. And I think that if, if somebody has a barrier, like with the remote kind, you know, with the telephonic participation, I think that if you have a barrier to having a stable background, and you have a barrier to being in one place, or barrier to the bandwidth to participate with, with the video, that you can, you know, just maybe get, notify in advance if there's something, if there's going to be something disruptive, I guess.
Yeah.
I think absolutely. We need to be, obviously, we need to be flexible if, you know, somebody has a circumstance where they can't make it on camera, or can't be in attendance for some reason. And, and we should always be flexible that way. And to your point, if we end up in a situation again where we're meeting, you know, where there are two meetings a week, you know, maybe we need to look at things. But maybe we kind of lay out protocols for now, with the assumption that we're on a relatively regular meeting schedule. And we say, you know, ideally, this is our goal, that on a regular meeting schedule, when it's twice a month, we'd like to have everybody on camera with a stable background. And if there's a situation, if somebody, if a situation comes up for someone where they can't be, okay, let us know in advance. Well, you know, we'll be flexible, obviously, and, and, you know, and can be clear about that upfront in our meeting, something like that. Does that make sense? Does that sound fair to everybody?
Sounds fair. I mean, I already see next week, Eva and I already have a, we have a situation where we are in this meeting, rolling right into the Carlisle meeting, right? Wow.
Yeah. I completely.
Five or six hours straight.
Right.
Committee meetings.
To Sarah's point, there were weeks over the summer that I had a meeting every single night, just about every single night. So, you know, even physically, when you are traveling, there is no way, it's either you answer, you know, you participate in a meeting, or you don't participate because you are in a car and you're listening and you are participating. But, you know, the background is not going to be your office. I'm sorry. It's just, you know, it's, it's not the usual and normal time right now, unfortunately. It seems that, and you, any, and, and these are all volunteer positions that are, nobody else is stepping up to help fill the void and, and help the process move forward, whether it's school reopening or other advisory positions. So it creates a little bit of difficulty and, you know, or choices to make, like, what do you do? You know, is virtual background okay? You know, that's, it's a, it's a stable background. Is the virtual background? Because we are not using technology the same way. It's not pre-COVID where we're in the same space together and someone was calling in. And you did have a concern, is this person going to be able to hear everybody? So technology has improved, technology has changed, situation has changed. So how do we adapt? Because it seems like even the laws governing the way we meet right now are very, very different. And I don't see anyone pushing to, you know, necessarily meet in person where the meeting goes actually a lot faster.
I would like to add a 13th item in our practices, which are less formal than our protocols, to the effect that school committee members will strive to be on camera in a well-lit environment during remote meetings. We may be volunteers, but we are not like other volunteers. We ran for political office. We have an obligation that's different than many, many other committee members. We also have the purse strings, unlike many, many other committee members. I think we have to hold ourselves to the very highest standard we can in our public settings. And this is our public setting. I'm very sympathetic to what Sarah says, and I think that's fine. But I think we should strive to consider our school committee responsibility among the more important volunteer responsibilities any of us will ever have because of the magnitude of our responsibility.
Does that wording sound fair to everyone? Strive to, and that leaves flexibility for when you can't, you can't. And we get that.
Yeah. Yeah, and then maybe, yeah, I think that, you know, yes, I think that's good.
Do you want to hear the language again?
No.
That's good.
Yeah.
And then one more thing, to Eva's point, Eva, you just said something about in-person goes faster, is more efficient. I'm not going to talk about in-person, because again, especially right now, it's a, it's a Concord mandate. But in terms of efficiency. mandate, but in terms of efficiency, and I'm not suggesting something specific, I don't know if I have the answer here, but maybe it's just about striving for efficiency. I think our meetings have gone very long, all through the summer, and they still are. I don't know what exactly we specify, if it's, you know, we all agree to use less words as we think, we all agree to be efficient in our conversations, we all agree to just keep moving things along, but I think we might want to at least say something about, we strive for efficiency in keeping meetings to the shortest possible length that we can.
Yeah.
Without short-changing topics, obviously, that's not to, you know, cut off people's opinions and everything, but.
We can dream.
Efficient, right. I think we could be, and I'm self-critizing here, because I chaired for the last year, and I look back on it and say, I think I could have run it more efficiently. So there we go. Of course, Sarah, you can do a better job than I have.
Heather, I'm sorry, Fatima.
Sorry, go ahead. It just brings back to point four in the previous page about the duration of meeting and the necessary conversation, factoring in the efficiency and then the necessary time that a conversation and discussion requires. I think it's worth for us to talk about those two, how to balance both of them. I want both. I want efficiency, I want short meetings, but I also want those discussions, those conversations that will include every viewpoint, so it's a fine balance. I'm interested in what other people think.
I feel, or I hope, maybe I'm optimistic here, but that as we move more into normal business, right? Granted, it's always gonna be touched with COVID stuff, but we were in such new waters, right? And the information was constantly changing and everything, there wasn't, I don't see how you could have run the summer more efficiently, because it was all unknowns, right? I mean, I saw a switch on the Carlisle side, I saw a switch, once the school was back in session and, and we had, we were still keeping up with these once-a-week meetings, but we didn't have all that stuff to deal with. We were, we had, what was that, we had a meeting, it was like 35 minutes long or something? It was fantastic. And, and there was, there's a light at that end of the tunnel, right? So, I mean, granted, this is gonna be a deep meeting, because of, this is setting the stage for the whole, for the whole year, but I do feel that, that being on track on a, on a sort of predictable schedule of the, of the regular operating, you know, stuff, then we can be more channeled. Because we're dealing with more knowns, right? The summer, we were really dealing with just an ever-changing situation.
And Fatima, that's not to take away from what you said, there are certain things where we will need to really debate and discuss and have an in-depth discussion, and to say we need to be efficient does not take away from that at all, in my opinion. There are certain things where we will need to spend time and debate, and others where we just need to be ready to be efficient if, if there isn't that, you know, debate necessary on things.
I'd be very content to take what you say, Heather, as a, an intention for this year, and that you, that we all hold the chairs largely responsible for bringing out any efficiency possible. I would hesitate unless we have to to declare in writing that we're striving for efficiency, lest somebody misunderstand that we're trying to foreclose widespread community engagement. Not that that would ever be our purpose, but I think we can accomplish what you're saying, which I think is very necessary.
That's fine, you're right, it doesn't have to be in writing if we're all.
In fact, one way to monitor how effective we are is what happens to participation. You know, if we run really good meetings, people are gonna come.
So Court, just a thought, and we don't need to, this is part of our practices, but many other school committees put time, allocate time to agenda items, just to try to understand what the expectation is, you know, we have a 10-minute presentation and then 20 minutes of discussion, or whatever, and then.
So to that end, Sarah and I did discuss that for this meeting, and we thought because it was a, still a kickoff meeting for the year with this discussion so critical, we decided to forego it this time, and I expect we will revisit it, Sarah.
Yeah, I think it's up to you too, and if you think you can try it the next time, that's, if not.
I think it's a good idea, and once again, I say that, not having actually implemented it myself, trying a few times, and then COVID, right? And it was, everything was so unpredictable that we couldn't do it, but, so once again, I hope you can do better than I did at that. I agree, we should try.
So a quick question in this discussion, would we table certain items if they were taking too long, to Cynthia's point, and come back at a next meeting where everyone is more prepared? Because on one side, we don't want to stunt the conversation and the debate, but, you know, that balance is so important.
Yeah, I think that's something where you take it case by case. If we have something on an agenda and we, you know, we've estimated 15 minutes, and we're at 20 minutes and we seem like we're nowhere near the end, I think at that point, it is the job of the chairs to say, okay, quick, you know, we have a decision to make now, we're at 20 minutes, we could either keep going if we think it's important to make a decision on this tonight and consciously extend our timeframe, or we could continue the discussion next time. And I think you figure it out there, depending on what the topic is and whether you need a decision that night and all that, but it at least gives you a way to do a time check.
We have in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It's often indicative of that people don't have enough information.
Right. It might mean, let's get more information.
Because people are still seeking to know something, and so it's much more, it's better as a process to give people really a lot of time to get, rather than trying to rush through answers and.
And sometimes, and sometimes when we've done that, everybody's kind of stopped and said, oh, actually, I've said what I need to say, and I'm good, let's vote, you know, and sometimes we're ready to vote, sometimes we're not, so, but I think it just gives us that opportunity to make that conscious decision versus letting things go on and on without, without realizing it.
So I'm smiling, because I've been sitting with school committees since 1999, and every year I've had this conversation, and nobody's gotten it perfectly figured out yet, so.
Yeah, we're not the only ones.
The consciousness of it and the self-awareness is part of the, part of the way you make progress, and the willingness, when it's going on and on, if somebody says, you know, maybe we need to table it, or maybe we do need to vote, or whatever it is that tries to redirect it, you're just able to take the cue. In all my years of watching committees, when I'm not engaged, but more observer, I think that's the part where it doesn't shift, and those are committees where it just, you know, the meetings go on and on and on, and you don't really feel like you've accomplished anything. It's one thing to spend a lot of time and feel like it was productive, so I'm just chuckling, because it is probably my 24th year of listening to this discussion, so we'll, we'll work at it. That's all I can do.
The word striving keeps us safe.
Yeah, it's a great word, Court.
As a, as a matter of protocol, then, and mindful of the time, after we finish this conversation, we don't have this noted as a action item for tonight in the list of votes. I suppose, correct me if I'm wrong, that a, simply a public declaration that we endorse this is gonna mean our, our word is our bond on this, that we're gonna do all of that striving that Fatima suggests, and try to.
Yeah, I think so. I don't think this needs an official vote.
Yeah. So could we hear from folks one more time? Just go around the room, and your sense whether this, again, the, both documents say these require revisiting, which we can do at any time, but this is, as I said at the outset, our way of making our implied norms quite public and known to each, us, each other, and the public at large. Other comments about them? If I can just go on my screen, Eva, are you comfortable where we, where we have arrived so far on this?
I think it's a, it's a good start, it looks like it should work.
And Fatima?
I agree.
Jared and Lori, you don't get a opinion, sorry. You can be the objective monitors, see how we do.
I think I just gave you mine, whether you.
Keep us on task.
And Cynthia?
Yes.
And Heather?
Agreed as discussed.
And the regional chair? Sarah, you okay with this?
Yeah.
Well, good, thank you for everybody who put time, time in on this, I hope this serves us well. The, the new order then was, Sarah, if I'm correct, we did a strategic plan, and I'm gonna start with a caveat and say, the most recent one I looked at really demonstrates the way last year was interrupted, and I don't know if your screen share is gonna capture that, how we were looking at where we stood last winter, effectively, when we moved from the major, the major threads of our strategic plan into more annual objectives that were pertinent to last year, Lori.
Well, I think my goal tonight, and we can certainly take different slants on this, my goal was to just make sure all of the committee was aware of what's in the strategic plan, and Court's right, we have every year picked pieces of the plan, it's a five-year plan, we're not trying to accomplish all of it in a year, we're now into the middle, really, of the plan for 2021, with the closure in 20, the end date in '23. We did get interrupted, and we haven't really done that review yet to talk on where we left off and where we're going. I actually think that's part of the goal setting you're gonna do, part of my goals, part of the school improvement goals. I think all that'll loop all that together with where we were and where we're trying to go, with a big lens of COVID has to be the lens on top of all of it, obviously, right now, which is different than where we were. I would say, and I think I've said this at least a few times over the summer, the, the core objectives of the plan have held as the priorities during COVID as much as pre-COVID, if not more, in some cases. And so my goal tonight was to just make sure everybody was on the same page with a five-minute look at the objectives. I'm not even gonna go through all the initiatives, and there's plans that go along with each of those, and Court's right, if, I will screen share this, so you can just, as you're looking between meetings and as we're talking on what to do next, the homework would be very valuable, I think, rather than me trying to go through it all. In terms of how this is structured, it's a live document that does, these are all hot links, anything in yellow, so these have been our four objectives that have been our guiding lights since we went through the process of strategic planning in the winter and spring of 2018, my first year in Concord, combined over both, both districts. These are meant to be the big umbrellas and the long-term pieces, the initiatives are meant to be more the action steps, and if you look at this, the links actually are action plans attached to them, and each year we've picked, picked pieces of these to work on, and you can see it's grown over the last years, that more and more gets included. And so that's certainly a piece of what we want to do this year. I don't have a firm set on how to break it out with the COVID piece attached, but we will figure that out. And I just think it was an important baseline for us to have tonight, as you're considering your goals, and then the rest will follow. We very successfully in 2018, 19, the intent was that this plan would become the overarching direction, because it was so widely discussed and supported among large groups of stakeholders, it was a very inclusive process that I'm happy to update any new members on individually if they didn't, many of them participated, so I don't know that I need to do too much of that, but just in case. And then these were the themes that resulted, and I think my hope is these haven't changed, I think we've actually validated them more and more as the years have gone on. So really looking at, teaching and learning is essentially the thread of the multiple paths to success, looking at engagement, innovation, I don't know, check, checkmark that one for this year, maybe, in ways we never expected, and multiple paths to success, and that really became the umbrella for response to intervention and special education, both, and we've made a lot of progress in both of those. Well-being, this was very much about social, emotional well-being of kids, naming it as a priority, and you can look through these to see there's a lot of waves we've been coming at that. It's as much and more a priority this year, and some of these ways probably need to get tweaked, because there's a different environment. Inclusive culture, I think this one rightfully has been a force for us over the last number of years, and I just want to stress, a good amount of this is about inclusion and race, but it is meant to be broad, this is very broad language here in the objective on purpose, so that it is inclusive of all groups within our schools, whether that includes socioeconomics. I've talked with a few of you this week about how special education can be a hard, a hard dynamic, if you're in a high-performing competitive culture, that can be a piece that really disenfranchises you at times. On and on the list goes of how we want to be sure we're including all of our kids, and families, of course, and making them feel valued, and that we really thrive on that diversity. So we could, we could talk all night on that, as you know. And then this last one was really, initially it was, let's build a new middle school, and we decided it should be a little broader based than that, but we've obviously really made progress on that. I've been in touch with the chairs of the middle school building committee this week to say we're ready to figure out how to get back on track after the six-month hiatus. So I do believe that this would remain a huge priority of the work this year. We did include, and I think this is interesting to me, that I don't think we've ever appreciated our physical facilities as much as we do right this minute, and so this was meant to be about how to better use those facilities, how to maximize outdoor space, and boy, have we kind of been thrown into some of this in ways we couldn't have calculated, but it's also about really maximize the use of the buildings, and I think, what a great time to have that lens to, in a place where we're so appreciative of just being in them on a day-to-day basis. So, so I think the hope was just to get this all in our minds tonight, as we start those bigger-picture discussions that are gonna frame the rest of the year. This is purposely a brief document, we did not create a document that's binders and binders full and sits on shelves, it has been a living document, and one that I really, really want to see stay that way. We have been able, in, especially that 18, 19 year, last year, of course, getting so interrupted, got derailed, but when the, when the alignment of the strategic plan, the school committee goals, the superintendent's goals, then feed into the school improvement goals, which have even fit in, in some years, directly into individual teacher goals in the evaluation system, you really start to see progress and a lot of momentum, and I think we're still benefiting from even the earlier years of that. Teacher evaluation, you'll hear from me in coming reports, we're fostering and supporting them, to Court's point, this year, that process is about support of all that's new, but again, that even hits all the innovation and relationship piece that we're so focused on. So that's a very high-level view, and that's what the intent was tonight. I will turn it back to you for whatever discussion you want to have or questions.
So we're not here to review this, as opposed to really just understand it again.
That was the intent, we certainly can bring you reviews, and I think, my thought was when the school improvement plans come to you, we'll have to do the catch-up of where they left off and where we left off on these, as they, at the building level, frame what's coming next.
So when those come, I'm sorry, Heather, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'd like to make one quick comment on it, primarily because of the fact that, like Lori said, this really is what drives and should drive all of the various goals, Lori's goals, our goals, everything should complement each other along the path to the high-level vision, which this defines. And my comment, having been involved in this as it was created, you know, you're thinking you want to keep it high-level enough that it, it doesn't have to change all the time, and yet be able to get detailed enough that it, it leads to specific goals. Well, that specific part, we've learned over the several years, it was successful at, right? The high-level part, here's the ultimate test, a pandemic. And, you know, if you didn't know these goals, you would almost assume, well, we're in a pandemic. We're going to have to go back to that strategic plan and tear it to shreds and do something else that's pandemic-related. But I think it speaks to the strength of this document. If you look at it now, if we had, we had to come up with, you know, four strategic visions for what we would do during a pandemic, I think it would be the same as the four strategic visions we have there. I mean, they're just as valuable and important as they were when we created them, not knowing this. So I just wanted to mention that, that it's even through the lens of the pandemic, this document is an incredibly valuable guide for us. And I think we can use it as such as we define our goals and talk about Lori's and really think about the year. So kudos to that planning process, Lori.
Yeah, it was the process, not any individual, which is why it's working, I think.
Yeah, it was great.
It definitely holds up and it's not something you look at and say, wow, we really need to overhaul this in light of COVID.
Yeah.
Definitely holds up. Again, it just makes you aware, though, of we don't have as many calories. So I think goals are particularly important this year that they be really aware of the restrictions on everybody's, you know, it's like twice as hard in the days before time as long. So we just have to be, especially with people who are involved with the building committee and day-to-day activities, just figuring out how to do that heavy lifting without burning out.
Sure. Agreed.
Well, well said, Cynthia. Absolutely right.
So way forward will include you bringing us, if you will, status on these 2020 initiatives with the likelihood that going forward, we're going to see completion on ones near completion, certain priority ones that are ongoing continue on, and perhaps some that are either next on list, so to speak, or are introduced because of the pandemic and the COVID challenges we have. Is that a rough sense of what's going to guide you, Lori?
Yeah, with Cynthia's comments, I think, front and center to all of that as to what's actually doable this year and knowing so much has already changed and now we're trying to support that. How do we recognize that almost as progress within the plan without adding too many more things on? So I think it's, well said, Cynthia. It's just really, really being selective on what we consider priorities outside of what it takes right now to keep the day-to-day going, which the good news is a lot of that is hitting a lot of those priorities.
And for my sake, if nobody else needs it, can you speak again to the sequencing of work on the initiatives for 2021 that fall out of the strategic plan and the school improvement plans?
Well, and I'm actually coming at it a little differently this year and this can be part of our discussion tonight. Some years I've brought my goals first. This year, I purposely wanted to hear your conversation start with all these factors weighed in. And I think actually probably what will evolve in the next few weeks is that my goals and your goals will happen, come together simultaneously. The school improvement plans we're getting up and running in our school councils, we talked about that today. So I think that would follow next. And then from there, we have action steps at the buildings that, you know, trickle from all of those overarching pieces.
I have a question about the school improvement plan. So the process in the past, is this something, is this something that is worked on during the previous academic year with recommendations at the end of the year for the following year? So how did COVID impact that? Did the people continue to work or do we have goals from last year?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Everything got interrupted. So they had improvement plans that were midstream in March when we closed. We really never had a chance to go back and do the closure. Court's speaking accurately about, we never closed those out. So I think the goal, I think the process, when they get their councils together, will be to do that review of where they left off and use that as informed discussion to really form this year's goals. The law says that the improvement plan goals will be set in the spring for the coming school year. I don't know any district anywhere that's doing that right now. We all acknowledge that was not reality this past spring. So now I think we're all diving in and getting them planned. And probably that's better, given how unpredictable this year is, that that probably makes more sense to write goals in October and then revisit them a couple of times as the year evolves. The hope, knock on my wood desk here, the hope is that in this spring, we will be writing improvement plans and goals for the 21, 22 year and get back on track.
Other comments, questions about the strategic plan? Sarah, OK to move to the school committee goals?
Yeah.
This time?
I think so, yeah.
I think I'd be accurate to say Sarah and I didn't come up with anything that we considered to be the perfect process whereby we generate school committee goals for this year. And a possible approach that I put to the committee is that perhaps we hear from people in terms of major priorities in your view for school committee goals. What is, you know, what is at a very, very high level for you? And just hear from each other informally. And then having that as a backdrop, we could then, if you wish, and this is risky, look at an update that I alone have done of last year's goals to try to bring it into the current day. The risk, I think, is that we are too blue-sky in the beginning and too trapped in last year's revision at the end. So I don't know by way of process what would work, but that's one idea I'd put to us.
So since we're meeting next week, I think at least for me, and I've been on for a year already, if we can put together a list of the things that we absolutely have to do by law and all understand as a group, having, being able to review that before the meeting, what our obligations are throughout the year as a school committee. And then do we have any local things that we do every year? I'm not sure that that's true, but maybe I'm forgetting something. And then outside of that, that's what I am saying. So what do we usually do as a committee every year? I'm not sure. I don't have that off the top of my head.
So every year, if it's OK for me to respond to that, every year we develop budget and capital plans. Every year we evaluate the superintendent. Every year we have an obligation around community engagement as we define it. Every year we have a few required votes, such as school choice, that are baked into our calendar.
Budgetary.
And.
Budget, yeah.
And we have negotiation responsibility. And then I turn to my colleagues and Lori and Jared and say, does that encompass the high-level non-negotiables for this committee?
Did you mention policy?
Policy.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Yep. And any, so do we have to pay attention to policy? No, but we are responsible for policy. So in theory, you could skip a year's attention, but we don't. So yeah, let's get that high on the list as well.
We could certainly decide to do it differently. We could decide that we're not going to, you know, keep going through policies regularly like we have been and only address necessary ones. Or we could, you know, we could decide to do it differently, but we have to do something consciously decide.
Yeah, to do nothing is to implicitly accept all the policies that are in place.
Are we considering this just for this year because of the pandemic? Or is this a pattern that we're looking for in the future?
Our pattern, go ahead, Court.
Let's focus on policy, what we're discussing right now. Is this just temporary for this upcoming year or not?
No, no, it's generally policy have a sort of enduring influence as a rule.
I think the question was, are we talking about right now, if we don't focus on policy, are we going to make a new kind of timeline of how often we look at policy? Or are we just, we're going to, what, I guess it would probably help to say, how, you know, how many policies we normally look at every year? What is there, we have, like in Carlisle, we have a schedule of when each policy is going to be reviewed, kind of in batches. We have a similar kind of thing here?
No, I'm afraid ours was not as orderly a process. We, last year, had two parallel approaches. One was pay attention to what surfaces as a priority and two, as time permits, do the housekeeping review. But even with the housekeeping review, we could prioritize which ones had no approval date on them, for example. Hence, we didn't know how long they had not undergone a review. And then we routinely got delayed by the time required to discuss potential new policies.
So I would be reluctant to either say exactly what we're going to do with policy or to say we're not going to do policy because one thing we know is with COVID, we might need additional policies. And I think we have to then assess, again, where would fall as we, you know, in terms of prioritizing our work.
Yeah, I almost think policies, sorry, Sarah.
No, I was just going to say, if we don't have a standard calendar that we're following, we're not deviating from anything, right? It leaves us a lot of latitude so we can sort of proceed as has been done in the past on that one.
Yeah, and I would almost say we circle back to policy after we've discussed all other potential goals because it's kind of a matter of, OK, you know, what else do we have on our plate? And then do we want to just respond to policy needs? Or do we want to try to, you know, fit in a few other standard reviews along the way? But I think we come back to that question based on what else we have.
Yeah.
So, but to return to Cynthia's, what are our yearly things? So that was the list. Court just gave us the list of basically what we do every year. So I don't know if you wanted to, did you have a follow-up from that, Cynthia? Or was it then, those are the things we typically do and then, and then was there something new that you were getting to?
I'll go back to, is it my memory that we usually see the superintendent's goals before we frame our goals or am I getting it backwards?
I can't speak to that, but I do know that she's expressly asked to see our goals to, in light of the fact that they might influence hers. Did I put words into your mouth, Lori?
Yeah, or at least listen to tonight's conversation. With so many new members and a very unusual year, I just thought, I thought it would be helpful to me before I propose things to sort of just hear the committee bounce ideas around and directions around, which is already proving to happen. So I'm happy to bring drafted goals soon so that they're not happening after this conversation, but can be happening simultaneously or even wrap mine up before you finish yours, either way.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of our goal discussion, it definitely makes sense for us to have this initial discussion and then tie what we're doing into what Lori's doing, you know. We want them to come together and work congruently. So.
You know, mine aren't going to be anything to surprise you, I assure you of that. I'll leave it at that without getting into too much detail. There's, I don't see any brand-new big initiatives here other than let's get through an academic year like no other, support one another through it, include each other through it, which is going to reference the discussions we've already had and let's try to get the middle school back on track. I think that's going to be essentially the big picture of what I bring to you.
That was a part of why we set up this meeting and then the follow-up meeting next week, which is sort of to give a chance for an evolution of a conversation. I don't, we don't expect to, I don't think, leave today because this is our launching point.
Right, right.
So for the sake of initial conversation, Dr. Hunter, this is, I hope it's helpful. I don't have a clear idea of how to go about this, but I'm just thinking out loud for, again, the sake of the initial conversation. So I'm looking at the strategic objective of inclusive culture. So I see the goal, create collaborative. So the word, the key words at Japonesis, collaborative and then community, which I think I am curious to see what more we can do as a district or you as a leader and administrator and the staff to have more community in this goal and know it's going to be extremely challenging. And I'm looking also at the initiative out of Thoreau and I'm also wondering how we can, and that came up naturally, organically happens. So I'm looking to, hoping to see more of that throughout the entire district. But again, I completely understand how challenging that can be and the need for it to be natural and just to come together at a school level. So that's something that I will be looking for and I'm happy to work with my colleagues in the school committee on how to achieve that and how to measure that. Yes, in the next few months, you know, it will take a clearer shape, but that's something that I have in the back of my mind.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a very essential thing for us to hear about and discuss and perhaps render opinions on is this idea that we've got very clear goals and we've got a lot of activities. How are we going to measure progress toward goals? Is going to be a useful conversation at some point. I certainly support that.
It will. And I also think some of it will come down to, in terms of actionable items, some of them will be ours and we'll need to have some actionable items. And some of them will be Lori's, the administrations. And some of it will be, you know, supporting the administration in a certain effort and asking for updates about certain things and asking for interaction on them, but not necessarily having the action items ourselves, if that makes sense, just because we want to make sure that we're staying in our lane and give Lori the opportunity to drive the things that she should. I think the concept of a lens can be very important. And if I can just make a high-level comment that kind of jumps onto both of these, both Cynthia's question and this, I feel like, and this is basically to answer your question, Court, where should we begin here? I think our beginning should be those things that you listed that we do yearly. Some of them will take more focus and some less, but have that as our list. And really with one joint, at least, addition, which is support, you know, support equity and well-being in a time of COVID, right? And that's very broad, obviously, and will encompass various different things and various ways to support the administration. And I think it starts to touch that the equity piece will encompass cultural equity. Like you mentioned, Lori, there are so many different pieces of equity that are important, whether it be special ed, socioeconomic, racially, et cetera. So I would kind of start to see the high-level goals as those yearly things plus a high-level support what we have. support what we have to do to get through this year with a focus on that equity and well being for everyone. And, and that focus would mean that we would expect to hear about Lori's goals related to cultural proficiency and related to equity on all various fronts, that kind of thing. But so that's just kind of an initial opinion to get us going at least.
Well, when I took my own blank piece of paper to this, Heather, my first section simply was titled COVID-19. Because we have a responsibility to get through this year safely. Everything else matters little if we don't accomplish that first objective. And within that COVID-19, following health and safety and educational delivery and the fiscal management necessary to do it is what you just said, educational equity. Keeping that as a, a major lens, as you say, helps us know where to pay attention. The, the annual responsibilities are not really negotiable. We can discuss how we state them, but they're not negotiable. Where we will have some debate, I think, is on moving from the critical COVID, which is general in nature. What does health look like? What does educational look like? What does educational equity look like? What does financial support for the same look like? Where we will have debate, I think, is moving down to the level of objectives for this committee. We know there's an objective called middle school. And we know there's an objective called bargaining. There is an objective called policy and it's going to manifest it somehow. Do we go beyond diversity and inclusion lens to more than, more than a lens role is something we will probably discuss. Other, other objectives that we have from previous years are looking at the regional funding projections for the two town cost share. So that we can see what kind of speed bumps are in front of the two towns based on the enrollments that we know now in the two districts Concord and Carlisle, both heading toward the region. And another leftover is the facility fees. Another section that you put in, I won't say you, Heather, but through your guidance a year ago, and I thought it was quite useful, was the idea that a lens would also include topics for reporting and discussion that we would hope to have time for during the course of the year. So that the, the experts that work in the district could bring to us some of that expert knowledge, not just for make work presentation where we are spectators, but more importantly, where we could engage briefly in some genuine conversation with some of the district experts in some of the areas, be it RTI or Q5, or those are some of the ones that were in the past. School safety, Spanish, the Spanish program no longer a pilot, cultural competency and so on. So as, just as you say, don't expect any surprises. I think the school committee probably can say the same. I don't think any of these are going to be, be surprises. To Cynthia's point, I guess, let's be, be careful we don't over promise.
Yeah, I would say that list of things that we, we talked about wanting, you know, presentation and updates on last year should be for the most part just put aside at least for a year. I mean, some of them, some of them we might end up wanting or having updates on based on COVID planning and where it's going. And I think I, I at least think we should leave that more to Lori or the situation to dictate where that's going. But I don't think we should be at this point saying, we want an update on Q5 this year. We want an update on, you know, specific topics. That to me doesn't make any sense right now.
So.
So to the point of, so I look at the presentations that come in to the school committee, not so much as something that, you know, it's presented to us. I, I look at those opportunities as communicate, district opportunities to communicate out what programs, what, what is happening inside the, the district, regional district. As parents not necessarily have that window into what happens on daily basis, what, what's available to my child? How does the education is delivered? How does this affect the achievement of my student or well being of my student? So that, you know, I look at those presentation as communication out to the, not just to us, but to all of our parents. Last year, to the, to, to your point about, you know, we should be careful what we are asking for in terms of these kind of presentations and communications. But last year, we did not get a chance to hear about all, all of the changes that were rapidly and rapidly happening in programming around special education. There was, you know, we have a brand new special ed director. We have curriculum, new curriculum people. And there, there were so many, there were so many exciting things that happened that it, you know, if you are at a moment not dialing in because your child doesn't have, doesn't have the need or, you know, you don't, there's just so much information happening. At some, you might not be dialing in to look for this information, but at some point it would be nice to, to, to have more of, of an, just an overview of where we ended up last year, right? And that provides for more of the transparency and accountability that CPAC members and families that have kids in special education are looking for. So it's, it's definitely a very valuable tool to bring. But we should also be very careful how we, you know, how many of those presentations we ask for and be more specific on what we are looking to, to learn and, and what families in our districts are looking to understand, right? Especially right now in the day of COVID. What is happening and, and the limitations, time limitations that COVID has put on us.
So Court, may I suggest that you and Sarah, perhaps, so I like what you said about COVID and I, I would like you to get that into a list of goals, the way you framed it. And so then we could discuss it at our next meeting. I also want to be very cognizant of the fact that Alexa's not here. So my opinion, I would like to have a, a list of, a longer list perhaps of us, of things that we can really trim back or be aware of the things we might not be able to do or reports that we can skip this year, as Heather said. Does that seem like a way to move forward or do you want to have a more in-depth discussion tonight?
So we take, if I hear you correctly, we take what we've heard tonight. We be sensitive to the fact that Alexa has not yet been part of this. Did Sarah and I prepare a, shall we say, a discussion draft, a discussion list to be added, deleted, tweaked, whatever, whatever? And have that as a agenda item in the near future.
And I'd like to speak. Some things are maybe a small lift. And maybe we could slide them in, but other things are, I mean, all, all this, all this add up to a huge lift. So we have to be cognizant of that. So, you know, sort of understand what we expect and what, you know, Dr. Hunter would expect. You know, obviously the COVID, that's not something we can, we can put a, a how many days this would take kind of a thing. But other things that, that would fall outside of that, we would need to understand how much, what's the overall commitment of the administration and school committee, particularly administration.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we should, if we should necessarily commit to, I mean, I think we should look at the topics for reporting and discussion, but I don't know if we should necessarily commit to trimming back any of it. Because I think what, what I've heard through, through a few Heather's comments, everybody, is that there's going to be stuff that organically comes up in its relationship to COVID. I don't think we should be, I don't think we should make a list of things to look for as a siloed item at all. But I think that we also don't want to definitely, to, to cut off the possibility that, that, for example, Q5 may come up in relationship to how the year is operating, right?
Absolutely.
Special education and equity are definitely going to come up and, and will need some kind of, or expect some kind of check in on those, those kinds of things as they relate to the COVID, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's prescriptive as, you know, it doesn't say, well, we can't discuss this because it isn't our goals, you know, kind of the thing. Yeah, I think this was a, you know, and last year it was just sort of like, and we would always have been checking on special, you know, special education and all the surrounding issues. So I think what you're saying is correct. We just have to, things that we aren't in our normal, perhaps, like Court was saying, the regional funding project, which is, I think that that should be totally baked into our budgeting process every year.
Agreed.
Anybody would disagree with that because it's.
Baked into budget process.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
And agree.
Does that seem like.
That you're actually agreeing with what I was saying, which was that all of, you know, potential reports back would be kind of baked into that COVID goal, that we don't have to list them out. There might be a discussion about Q5 or about something else. I'm sure that we know there will be discussions about special ed, right? And how that's going through COVID, there's no doubt that, so, but that those are, those are part and parcel of the high level umbrella goal of execute education amid COVID, right? And that we don't have to specify what topics we'll talk about because we'll figure it out as we go.
No, we're not going to set up a schedule that says, okay, in February, at our February meeting, we definitely want to hear an update on trips, right? We want to hear stuff when it's.
And I'm going to say we probably shouldn't talk about trips this year because that's going to be a waste of time.
Okay, yes.
Let's just not say the T word at all this year.
I missed all those conversations.
I'll, I'll share with you, I'm not entirely convinced that we shouldn't list some of the items because I think that when we declare what we know to be a lens we want, we, we tell the district, that's a lens we want this year.
I think, I think that's what Cynthia, Cynthia was asking for the list of what we normally, what we would expect for reporting and discussion. And then we can kind of just look at those things of what, you know, what, what are the ones we're more expecting to see in COVID related stuff in some way, right? Is that Cynthia?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying, I, I think we should have, not, not to scare anybody, particularly Dr. Hunter, we should have the long list to understand how we're, we could just have, I, I just think we needed to continue the conversation and especially with that Alexa here, I think it will help us. Just, so we're all talking in the sort of the same language as our practices and protocols have encouraged us to do. It would just, I'm a visual learner, so I need that list.
And then those, those things don't necessarily have to become goals, you know? Under the goal of COVID, whatever we call it, it could say topics could include. And you list five things, right? And they might include that and they might include other things, but, and, and that seems like a way to capture the topics that we're thinking about now without making it, you know, a laundry list of presentations that have to happen somehow.
Correct.
So it, does it, are you guys clear on what, what you're bringing back to us?
You guys want to know what we have to do, right? What do we do every year?
Right.
What are we obligated to do, but what do we also usually do, kinds of things? And then what are the, the list of the things that we expect to see information on usually? And then we can put that all up and, I mean, and really start with like COVID is the top, right? COVID. And then obligations, expectations.
Yeah, and it can really be, we can end up with a single list of goals, which is a COVID goal that has, you know, topics may include with lots of topics. And then there's budget and there's policy and there's evaluating the superintendent and there's public communication, right? And there are our main goals.
Bargaining.
What?
Bargaining.
And bargaining, exactly, and we'll have bargaining this year. So, and there are our main goals and, and that's our list there. And there, and there are other little things that have to happen. There are tasks that have to happen throughout the year. But I feel like that could be our list of goals right there. And then on the Concord side, we add middle school project. But that, that that's our list of goals and we can specify under each one if it has a particular lens or something. I don't know, that is, to me, that's kind of a rough draft, not written down, but there's my verbal version of a rough draft that we could all consider.
I, I think that we don't have to put limitations on the documents today. I think, no, we agree that we need.
Not limiting at all.
Absolutely, I think we need, we agree that we need the, this time for more discussion and just prepare for our next meeting. So I think we can move on to the next topic.
I, I'm comfortable that Sarah and I know what to bring to you next week.
Good.
Try to get it to you, much in anticipation of next, yeah, yeah. And then, and so that can take us into a quick, I think, a quick discussion on the manual. It was not.
Sure. So I reversed my over technology driven review process. And as you could see, the link is in the meeting agenda. And to obey open meeting law, I ask that committee members who have comments or suggestions, send them to me via email, just to me. And I will gather those up and edit them into the existing document. Does anybody have any questions about that process?
No, and I, I understand this won't replace anything. What it does is give us a, a very useful one stop source if we want it, is that? But, but only if we're comfortable that we've looked at the, the legal documents or the, the ones required of us by, by legislation and by way of formal training. So once we're comfortable, this can be a, a reference guide.
That's what it says.
Yes, I would also say really a huge thanks to Cynthia because we've said for years that we should have a manual. And this is really helpful to give us something to start with. And I think it's also really important that we're all a part of creating it, not just those of us who've been here for a while, because it's something we can all own. So I think it's really important that everybody go through this in detail and make sure we all feel comfortable with it. It's really important to have the perspective of new people as well as the perspective of those of us who've done it for a little while, so.
Absolutely.
Great process.
A question that just, just came to mind now, not, honestly, not a leading question. Just curious, do you think the town clerks should look at this?
Sure, after the, perhaps we get the input from the rest of the committee members before we release it, sure. I think that would be great. I'd like you to be somewhat of a finished product once we give it to them.
Got it, okay.
I think MASC could be a resource too.
Yep.
So I, I want to echo what Heather said. Thank you, Cynthia, this was not a small amount of time required to put this together. So going forward, this then becomes our homework and we communicate with you independently and you bring back the collective result.
Yep. Do we want to give people time, you know, is it? I was thinking, I know we're trying not to add anything to our workshop, but it might not be the worst thing to have a discussion. not be the worst thing to have a discussion about finalizing it or somewhat finalizing it at the workshop versus next week?
That's two weeks, that's two weeks from today. One answer would be, good idea, let's check with Dorothy.
Sure. What nothing is part of her, we, we could release her and do it after.
Or that, yeah.
It actually feels like it would be a good time to do it because we'll just have been talking about how we operate and how everything happens. So that seems like a great time to me.
So what would be an appropriate timeline for you to give to us Cynthia, assuming that this thing resurfaces in a public session October 13?
Obviously, if I say, oh, just wait until, you know, obviously doing your work sooner rather than later is probably the best thing because if, if anyone's like me, if you can need too much time, I kick the can down the road and unfortunately don't get the job done. So it would be good if people could go through it as soon as possible, especially if there's huge concerns, I would need to know.
So the please be nice to Cynthia goal says in, in a week's time, 10 days at the outside?
Yeah.
Thank you. And Lori, will that give you time to pour over this as well?
Yeah, I've, I've seen the draft before all of you did, I think, so, but I'll go back through and be sure.
We can move on to, to new business now?
I think we're gonna, we gotta, we need to just do the budget piece. And this is just a high level share out of what we're thinking right now based on conversations that I've been in over the last four or five days with the finance committee, the town manager, the town moderator, the select board, I know talked on this last night also, so I have feedback from their conversation. And it refers back to some of what you mentioned back in the liaison's reports. The town manager, town moderator approached the town manager and I about a timeline for town meeting 2021. I appreciate her foresight to realize that sticking to the typical plan might not make the most sense. Much of her initial thinking had been about just the structured format of town meeting, knowing COVID had indefinite timeline impacts to the structures that were available. The response that she heard from both the town manager and I were more in terms of just the process itself benefiting from a longer timeline as well. So she had been suggesting a late spring town meeting, getting well into May and June or June with the mindset of not getting into after June 30th because no one wants to revisit a 112 budget. So I think that was her, that was been her approach was to avoid the trickle into FY22 itself, but to go as late as possible. So we'd been bouncing around ideas, we looked at calendars, essentially the schools said we'd be flexible. Graduation is June 5th, so that's probably the one date. We aren't flexible, however, there's been some brainstorm back and forth, there's pros and cons here. The setup we need for graduation, assuming COVID implications and the setup they need for town meeting are essentially the same. And we might actually have an efficiency of scale and only doing one setup, which was a late, late idea that is still percolating. So when, when I ended up, and I was just going to listen to the finance committee, but I know, I should know better than that, and was happy to give them some feedback. Jared and I had talked a lot about, we have absolutely no FY21 information from the state or even local receipts really. Never mind, 22 is not uneven on anybody's whisper list right now at the state level. So we'd be really operating and avoid, as well as the fact that, you know, we're just a few weeks into COVID hybrid mode, not knowing what's going to come next, not knowing how the plan of, you know, the, the remote piece is, are we going to end up all remote? Can we avoid that? All those big, big questions. And then, you know, the, the ultimate question that's hard for all of us to say aloud, what impact is COVID still having in September of 2021? So all of the ideas kind of converged into a few discussions last week of the longer the better. We, and Jared will talk on this, I know, when he gets to show you the draft of the timeline we're kind of playing with, and this is soft, it's more for feedback than a formal, this is the plan. That the more time we have, the less unknowns, they don't get, they're not clear, but they can't be any less clear than they are right now. I think as we get to the middle of the year, if we've stayed open essentially, that's a big piece of information versus a full-blown closure again that may or may not happen as the winter months come and the cold closes us back in the schools and people in their homes, et cetera. And then any inkling we can get, even if we can't get projected aid numbers, but even as we hear state receipts and town receipts, it's at least some data points. We would normally be well into the budget build right now. So that's another factor. There's frankly not, it's, it's not just the time and the bandwidth to get to it, it's the information we need. We are still, and Jared will get more detail, FY21 is still moving for us. So to try to settle in on even what, where exactly the budgets are as we open is still part of the discussion. It will come, it's just going to take a little bit longer than it normally does because, one, we opened late and two, it's got all these variables and some things are evolving as we open to, oh, we need, we have a need there that we didn't expect minor generally that we can absorb because we built monies in and can move things around a little bit. Or, oh, that's not going as planned and all of that. So I think my goal is that we get a sense of a timeline here to know when and how we're going to approach this. So Jared's drafted that for you to look at. And then work in conjunction with both, obviously both towns and what their timelines are evolving into. Carlisle's still not had its special town meeting for FY21. So there's another reference date to keep in mind, that's going to be in October. So we just, maybe it's because we're normally so far into this and et cetera, that, you know, to get it on this meeting just felt like it made sense to get your feedback. I felt a great deal of flexibility from the finance, Concord Finance Committee. They're having a little bit of a debate over there. It's not a bylaw, it's another piece of Concord directive that would normally have them put a guideline out in November. The meeting last week actually turned into much discussion about what would they try to do in November if we, if the budgets weren't evolving the way they normally did. But they said it with great flexibility of knowing that even if they put a number out in November, they'd definitely be revisiting it as we got through the process in the winter and spring. So I feel like there's a lot of collaboration on this, everyone wants to work together. I'm hoping if we, maybe we can't avoid building two budgets, but maybe we can only build them once. We know we can do it in a shorter timeframe and Jared will go through that. So I guess we'll just share what we came up with and Jared can talk to you about how it reflects much of our normal process, it's just on a different time, timeframe. This was assuming a June town meeting, so that's still not totally firm, the select board may vote that next week. They did not vote it last night, they had a first discussion, so. Go ahead, Jared.
Jared?
Yes.
Before you dive in, when you refer to two budgets, Lori, are you referring to two budgets necessitated by the uncertainties of state funding or the uncertainties of what September 2021 are going to look like or, or both?
Jared, I'm going to throw that to you because we've talked so much about it, you can
Sure. So we would build two budgets, one being that we're remote, I'm sorry, one being that we're hybrid and one being that we are all in district. So I think that the, the hybrid approach is more staff heavy. When we're in district, it would be less of the staff heavy. So what we're thinking is building these two budgets simultaneously. And I think by, and I'll go through this timeline, the, the later we go on this budget, the more information we're going to have, as Lori said. If we're here in January, when I'm proposing that we start this budget process, that's a pretty good inkling that we're at least going to be hybrid, if not maybe fall in district next year. We don't know that yet. I'm optimistic, but I think there's two different budgets. This budget is very different, as you see the FY21 budget is very different than the one that I brought to you all last November and December. So I think we need to have two budgets. So instead of doing it twice, we can organize it that I can go to one or the other and sort of present both to you.
You know, a few other burning questions for me, as, whenever we get to transition back, and I guess every day, the more we set things up to manage through this year with the hybrid and all this pieces we need to, there's stuff that we've built, there's stuff that, there's pieces we've taken apart. I don't think any of it's overnight to go back to what we had and probably shouldn't be overnight because we should think through what we're putting back and what parts maybe have evolved in a better way and all that. So I don't know that it's cleanly two budgets, it may end up being some version of a combination of the two, especially not knowing timelines of the virus. But it does, I think in our heads, we're to the point of, you know, we need a hybrid lens and then we need an all-in-person lens, at least to anchor the zero-based process and then we'll have that to work with. Do you want to give a quick look at the timeline at a high level?
Very high level. Okay. Can you all see that? Great. So just so you know, my budget process usually starts, last year started on September 3rd. So from September 3rd last year until the 11th, that's when I worked with the principals. So this one would be starting, obviously in October 1st, I send the enrollments out. December 18th, that would be my response to the FinCom and Concord's guideline letter. Instead of, last year we gave it to them on October 17th, we are not ready to do that yet. I think there's too many unknowns for us to do that. I think by December, we could, we could certainly do that and that can kick us off into the FY22 budget process. So what we're proposing is right after the winter break, January 4th through the 22nd, that's when I meet with all of the, the principals. I will do some planning in December with them or I'll even start earlier if they so choose. But between January 4th and January 22nd, that's when I'd start the budget development with the principals, going over all of the zero base, supplies, materials, all the personnel, et cetera. The week of January 25th to the 29th, that is when the principals would present their finalized budgets to the administration. February 9th, I, so we would turn it around very quickly. February 9th, I would present the recommended budget to the school committee. So just so you know too, the third Wednesday of the month is when the governor's budget is supposed to come out. As Lori said, we don't even have finalized FY21 numbers, so I don't anticipate having FY22 numbers on that date. We'll at least have more information on that. We'll have more information on if there's going to be a second part of the CARES Act or any other federal state monies coming in. So waiting on that is, is really going to be beneficial. And then I have a TBD on presenting to the two FinComs and the two towns. February 23rd, and again, we started from June 6th back. So June 6th would potentially be the Concord town meeting. And for us to hit all of the bylaws and their dates, we would have until March 8th to adopt our budget. And then, so my proposal would be February 23rd, that the school committee would adopt that, but then we would have between February 23rd and March 8th, we would have to have a public hearing in between there. So, and then the budget book this year would be available in late April. That way it would give, if there's any changes, et cetera. Because every time I, I submit a budget book, it's oftentimes already outdated and we put a lot of time and work into that. And if we can extend that, hopefully by April 30th, all the conversations will be done and we will have a budget ready and it will be accurate. So that's what we're thinking right now. Again, it's just the draft, but I do think it will be very beneficial to wait if, if everyone agrees to, and as well as the towns. So thank you, Jared. I just think there's so many unknowns. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
That, I think this is a great framework to start with and we obviously need, we don't have dates for the budget hearings from FinCom yet, right? Am I correct?
Carmen has proposed some of those within her draft of the timeline. So they're reflected here in Jared's outline. They didn't approve those at the select board, but she did have draft hearing dates in that one timeline version.
Where, where are they? I did not include that in this because that was a draft. I do have that. Because I do feel strongly that we need our budget books when they have their public hearing. So if that, if those are way off, I have a little bit of
Sure, yeah, we can look at that. Yeah, I agree, that's something that people who go to that hearing rely on.
This is going to, I mean, there's so many things that are going to happen. I just think we have to constantly review this until we
Yes, I agree.
I mean, I, I, there's, I can't even. So It looks like the, the, the public hearings are in the middle on, on April 15th. So if that is the case, then I can certainly adjust this April 30th date and get the budget books done before then if this That's our biggest headache or adjustment we have to make that I'm, I would be thrilled. Right. Yeah. So yeah, it's a great start.
Yeah, I agree with Cynthia that we, we have to keep watching it and be flexible and move it as necessary, but I also, and also fully agree that we should be moving it back to about this timeframe because there's no point in building a budget right now. I'm not surprised that the FinCom is supportive of moving it back because I would think they would be happy to look at a budget based on information rather than guesses also. So I appreciate you taking the time to, to put together this new timeline, Jared, because it makes a lot of sense, do it in an educated way.
Jared, can you clarify the, the December 18th bullet number two?
Yep.
Response to Concord FinCom will be sent to the school committee. Does that mean that on that date, you, you respond to FinCom and CCS? Is that what that means?
So every, since I've been here, it's a summer letter that we get, I think it actually came on July 30th this past year.
Yep.
Instead of really responding to that email, what we do is we do a fall budget book that last year came out on the 17th. And it, it not only includes all of the questions that they ask, but then I give an overview of how the year ended and what our anticipations are for the following year. So what I, what I do is I put that date that maybe would come to you and then once it's reviewed, then it can be on our website. We don't know yet if it's going to, if I don't have a lot of the information that they're asking for, I'm not going to be able to put together a budget book again, or it will be a smaller version of it. So I think by waiting until the 18th, and I can adjust that to give it to you all first and then wait, you know, the weekend and give it to them for you all to digest.
I see.
Usually, and we can, obviously, as we build agendas, we'll detail this more clearly. Usually, we present it to you and the FinCom gets it through the public posting of it. And then we usually meet with them within the week to go through the information that's in there. So, and that's an important, you need to see it first, give us feedback. We may need to tweak or be clearer, answer questions, and then go meet with the finance committee. Often it's within the, often it's within two days. But we would not change that order of events. I always believe the school committee should see all the information ahead of FinCom.
And I did that on a Friday, so I should have had something posted to the website that following Monday or Tuesday. So December 18th is a Friday. Did that on purpose to give it to you all first to absorb. And then maybe that Tuesday after I present it to you, if we have a school committee, which we might not, because it might be going into the, the winter break. But we can tweak that.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
So I think that's where we wanted to be tonight. We'll keep bringing you information from the other committees and boards and stay synced up and just keep updating you, and we'll go from there.
Move on to action items then? Any other questions? No? So we have a, well, we have really only four action items. One, one we're deferring now. Because I shouldn't be here, so.
The four that are here, you do need to vote. We removed the one that had to be deferred.
Okay, that I'm looking at, okay. All right. All of these, do we, I mean, I guess, is this an issue, like, is this a circumstance where we can vote en masse? Or do we want to take each one?
I think each one.
No, I think on this one, we need to take each one. Like, the calendar, if either Laurie or Cynthia, if one of you could just, you know, highlight the new items that you're bringing us.
So why don't I make a motion and we'll get it seconded and then they can clarify. A move for Concord and Concord Carlisle that the calendar published in the agenda this evening for 2020, 2021 be adopted as submitted.
Second for both?
Discussion?
So yeah, what, what's new here, Cynthia?
Cynthia, if you want to start, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I cannot tell exactly what's new off the top of my head. So Dr. Hunter, why don't you do that? I just, the most important thing for me is I want, I, I too understand the concern about the cohorting. And we were very cognizant of being sure that we keep track of that as we proceed through the rest of the year. So we did take that into account as we pick some of those dates. So I'll let you tell us what's new.
Correct, and we always will be watching the balance between the Group A and B and counting up days and making sure that the middle and high school kids get as close to equal time in person as we possibly can. So really, our focus was in November and December. Not going past that. Two topics primarily. One is professional days. We didn't use all of the available time with the reduction of the student year to 170 days. So we still had some of those because we didn't use all 10 at the beginning of the year. And then in terms of also conference days, so I'll just highlight where we landed. The professional days, we're looking at one in November and one in December. November 16th is a Monday, and December 11th is a Friday. That is actually an attempt to balance the cohorts, but we do need to keep the aggregate total as well. In terms of conferences, the elementary conference day actually remained the same. It's still the November 4th day. The middle school has pushed their conference day into December because we started later and it closer aligns with the trimester's end. The high school, and this, this conversation went on right on through even today. The high school is really focused on instructional time. And so we've had some discussion of how to balance the parental need for information. So we will certainly be making invitations to parents to reach out to teachers, should they have questions, concerns, et cetera. And I'll be working with the CCTA and Mr. Mistrillo on that later this week, so we start with that messaging. So right now, we don't have a day per se planned for the high school conferences. This has been an ongoing discussion for years as to whether we're actually reaching everybody we need to and whether it's the efficient use of time and the instructional balance. So, so that's where we are right now. We'll always be able to review it and look at conference days as the year goes on, if for some reason that's a better option. But right now, we believe the instructional time is where we want to put the school day hours and then work with parents on how to communicate and stay connected with them outside of that. So, so those are our recommendations. We did not go past January 1st.
Is it safe to say, Laurie, that some of the dates in the past January 1st could change? Usual vacation days?
Right, and, and this is just me without the calendar committee, but I'll answer it based on that. That I don't see a whole lot that may change here, other than the one that stands out to me again would be the April conference day for elementary. We'll tweak the early release days here that are tagged. Those have all shifted with the Wednesday schedules as we've outlined them in hybrid. But I think otherwise, the vacations pending your approval would hold. And the others are legal holidays, so. We do have a couple other professionals, at least a few other professional days to talk about, so those will be coming when we reconvene.
That was my question, you're adding, or not you're adding, but we're scheduling two more of them now. So we now have three professional days left to work with, or three days to work?
Let me get my, I'm keeping a running tally. So the teacher, really the way to think of it, the teachers are working 185 days, as always. The kids are in class 170, and we're trying to marry those two to a targeted, the calendar committee has targeted the last day of school to be where it always was, June 16th. So we're trying to continually evaluate all those moving pieces. And so when I tallied this up over the weekend, yeah, we have, in this calendar, we will have used, and it will vary by one day for the high school because of conferences, a total of, staff will have been in session. And again, I'm coming at it kind of that backwards direction. They'll have been in session 78 days, and the kids will have been in session. Doing math on the fly is probably not a great idea. A few less than that. So we have about, I think, I believe it's four days, four professional days left to work with. My guess, again, just me without the calendar committee, we're going to break up the month of March, I would expect, and look for another, maybe in May. And there may be one or two at the end of the year after the kids are out, something like that. But we haven't talked about it, so, yes, we have a few more to work with.
And, and just to reiterate the obvious, if we have a snow day, the students will be all remote.
Correct. Correct, we will go into remote learning and not need to make those days up. So hopefully, we can meet again as we get towards the December month and propose a calendar for the rest of the year that we can stick to. And everybody will get the last day of school solidified in their, in their minds.
Great, thanks for doing this.
Yeah, Dr. Hunter, I, I have a question about the high school. Is the feedback coming back, how those two cohorts are going, alternating, are working out whether a week on and off would be a better solution? I, I've heard about a survey circulating around high school. So I wonder if there is, if there are conversations with the calendar committee around that and if there is a flexibility, if the other option, one week on, one week off was a, a, a good option, whether a calendar would even allow for something like this?
So during the planning to reopen, we vetted all of those kinds of options. We felt very strongly that we did not want kids away from us physically for a week at a time. And that's why their, the hybrid schedules are set the way that they are. I would, and this is anecdotal, we haven't gathered survey data per se. I would say that right now, we, we see benefits to the fact that kids are never more than a day or two away from us. It was interesting because Mr. Cameron and I, when we went to the full remote day that Friday when the positive COVID case happened, I was in the school the following early part of last week. And it suddenly dawned on us that it was Tuesday and those kids had actually been out of school a whole week, just with one day going remote. So I, I think, I prefer what we're doing. I can't speak to the districts that are doing one week in, one week out. I think we're staying really close to our kids because they're with us frequently enough and that even one little thing can suddenly turn into a week where they're remote. So I wouldn't be interested in entertaining a change. If you all ask me to, I will. But I think we're pretty, I think we're getting a good flow a few weeks in at this point.
I don't think we should mess with it right now.
No, I agree with that.
No, but I'm pleased to hear you make the case the way you did.
Makes sense for kids, yeah.
All right.
All good on the calendar?
Ready to vote? Okay. Roll call vote?
Booth, aye for both?
About aye for both?
Is that aye for both?
Mostafi, aye for region?
Rainey, aye for both?
Wilson, aye for region? Now.
We might wrap up 2021 in time to Plan 2022, 2122.
Sarah, I'll do, I'll do this one for the Concord School Committee. We will entertain a motion by, to the Concord School Committee that it approve a one-year contract with the Concord Teachers Association, including a 1.75% cost of living salary increase.
So moved for Concord.
Second for Concord. With thanks to those negotiating this on both sides and to all the teachers who are in there just rocking it.
Yes, thank you.
Roll call vote, Booth, aye?
About aye.
Is that aye?
Rainey, aye.
That's it?
All last night.
All ready? Takes us, oh God, I just lost the agenda there. That takes us now to the vote for the school committee liaison roles. And my motion. We, first, do we have to list out, do we, do we need to, to reiterate all of them? Or everybody has seen the list and is comfortable with the list?
Well, you're going to need to.
Thought you were going to go through, there actually aren't names in what's posted.
Okay.
Were you guys going to go through?
I'm ready to do that if you want, Sarah.
Yep. Okay.
Stop me as I go, please. Adult and Community Education, Eva. Edco, Sarah. Concord FinCom, Cynthia. PEG Advisory, Court. Policy, Alexa, Eva, Fatima. Concord Select, Court and/or Alexa. Concord Financial Audit, Court. League, Heather. Capital Planning, Cynthia. CPAC, Eva and Alexa. Carlisle Select and Finance, Sarah and Eva. CMS Building, Heather and Court. Calendar, Cynthia, to be replaced at some point in the year with Eva.
Climate Action. Whoa, I'm just sorry. Calendar needs to have a Concord representative.
Okay.
So we can have two, I guess, but we need, 100% need a Concord person there.
Then I misinterpreted an earlier conversation, my apologies. Thanks for catching that.
Yeah, I was not on calendar, thank you.
I, I think I expressed interest in calendar, I think.
Oh, forgive me, okay. Can that read Cynthia and Fatima? Or it's, or it's an and/or, depending on what the two of you want?
I'm finding the way with whatever, Cynthia first.
So Cynthia and Fatima. Climate Action is unoccupied at the present time. Transportation, Concord Transportation, unoccupied at the present time. And then we, we have another one, and I don't know where it fits, and that is warrant signing. So it's not a, it is a rep, it is a rep to ourselves. So let's note, we need to circle back to that, so.
Can we just explain that one, Court?
Yeah, the, we have a fiscal responsibility in the form of signing, authorizing expenditures, both payroll and non-payroll. And to help me out here, I believe it is, it requires a majority, i.e. four. Is that correct? And the composition should be minimum Carlisle one, is that, is that accurate?
Yep.
Or on the region, three for Concord, but.
Correct.
So all four sign, or what?
So we decided to do it a little differently last year. In the past, it had always been, you know, okay, there are warrants to sign. Somebody comes sign them and kind of the first person who could get there and do it would. Now they're all electronic, or we can do it by email. And to simplify it, so that Jared wasn't always trying to chase down people, as of last year, we specified four people who were the designated signers. Now, anyone can sign it. If one person's out of town, I can't do it for a week, someone else will do it instead. It just made it easier for everybody to manage the process. Everybody still gets the warrants, so all of us have the right to look at all of the warrants and ask Jared or Laurie questions at any time if we have them. But it just made, it just streamlined things to have four people who would be designated the ones to sign them.
And then what I would add to that is the person within Ripley who sends those to us is typically going to give us a deadline, a two or three-day deadline to keep things moving.
So just so you know, we, we hold all AP warrants for signatures. We need those, we can hold those. We cannot hold payroll. So usually, we give you 24 to 30, 24 to 48 hours on payroll. And then AP, like I said, we, we do not release the checks until we have all the signatures. The good thing about this year is the auditors are now okay with the email response, and so is the town. So you don't have to physically sign them or catch up because the stack is about this high.
I was going to say.
Yeah.
I can't imagine what the Concord ones.
I got to do Case Collaborative and sign since March in the last couple of weeks, so. Good day, take the electronic.
Jared, tell us what AP is again?
Account payable.
Right, so that's the non-payroll. And so then, question to the committee, do we want to wrap this into our list of representatives for convenience? Is that okay?
So since Alexis is not here, why don't we give her the opportunity to participate in that discussion? Because that's, right?
Future agenda for warrant.
Yeah.
So then I conclude with climate and transportation, both for Concord, being not represented at the present time by the school committee. being not represented at the present time by the school committee. We can revisit that.
Court, I did talk with the town manager this afternoon. He clarified for me because I was not clear. On the transportation committee that the select board formed, the charge has listed the superintendent or representative. So it was set up to be a, a staff representation, not school committee per se. Doesn't mean you can't observe, of course, just to, I, I needed that clarity. So I figured you probably all did too.
All right, and that charge has actually been put in place by select board?
My understanding is they're getting started. Our initial designee is John Arena from Transportation. Once we know more of the topics they're going to cover, we can decide if Jared or I need to sub in and out. But right now, John has been, been asked.
Yeah, that's what he told me. So we think that charge is formal now?
It sounds like it is. I would want to double check that, but it sounds like things are getting queued up to get started.
Okay, the reason, one of the reasons this came to me since we met last was people on that committee were, were asking about bicycles, but not directly to me as a school committee rep. But that was why they were keen on this transportation committee.
I know a couple of the community leaders who have really taken on, you know, leadership of the biking. They are, at least one of them's on the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the list and I think we need a motion now to that effect.
Can I have a, can I ask a question about the Climate Action Advisory Board? I had expressed interest in that. My understanding was that we were putting a hold on that because of COVID. But if it is open, I am still interested in it because I am on the Concord Climate Action Network. And I think that would be natural for me, natural for me to be there if it is open.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
It makes sense.
Thank you.
We will add Fatima's assignment to that advisory board. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is that a, a motion that you need a, to be moved?
I think this is going to be a vote for the, for the roster as, as we've just outlined it, yes.
So moved for both?
Second for both.
Roll call, discussion, roll call vote.
Booth, aye for both.
About aye for both.
Is that aye for both?
Mustafi, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
Wilson, aye for region.
And can we ask a quick favor that one of you, it seems like you have it in front of you, Court. Could you send the final list to all of us so we all?
I'll be happy to. Yeah, and then you'll see it again in the minutes, but I'll get it to you tonight.
Okay, great. Oh, and then just a final note too, although it wouldn't make sense to do it tonight anyway. Just keep in mind that we will have to specify negotiators also as they, as those things come up. That's not until a little bit later in the year, but just want to make sure everybody knows about that.
Right, thank you. Because it certainly looms large on our goals.
Yes, very important part of what we do.
Okay. We can now vote on the surplus science textbooks.
I'll move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to surplus high school science textbooks.
A second for both. Oh, no, a second for region, that's sorry.
But that's okay.
Yeah, it's good.
Roll call vote.
Booth, aye for region.
About aye.
Is that for both?
Just region, Mustafi for region.
Rainey, aye for region.
Wilson, aye for region. And I think that's, that's solved.
Last bit of housekeeping. We want to propose, unless there's a great hue and cry, that we meet hopefully quite briefly, in fact, definitely quite briefly next Tuesday. We'll know for sure, we have an agenda by Thursday to confirm that. That would be a five o'clock meeting to end no later than 6:30. A week later would be October 13th and that would be a workshop with Dorothy Presser. And we've got to work up the hoped-for agenda based on the outcomes we want for workshop, more or less in keeping with previous years' workshops for school committees onboarding ourselves. And then we would not meet October 20. We'd have a final meeting of the month of October, October 27.
Other than that list that we discussed of the obligations, the regular business and the things that tend to get reviewed, is there any other piece of information that, that everybody wants in anticipation of ongoing goals, conversations? Okay, okay. If we can take one motion to adjourn.
I'll move for both committees to adjourn.
Second for both.
Booth, aye for both.
About aye for both.
Is that for both, aye?
Mustafi for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
Wilson for region.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good night all.
Good night.